Alrighty, um, October 28th, our meeting. So, start off with, uh, the September 23rd minutes. Um, if any, do you want to look those over?
Alright, we'll look them over.
If anyone has any suggested changes or additions.
Much better than yours.
Very good.
You left over the part about the--
You did the minutes?
Yeah.
Good job!
You want to move the Marsfield?
I don't know.
You can do our minutes every time. Iowa Secretary for years, remember that, Don?
Mm-hmm.
How could you forget?
I was in before you, so--
I know you were. Many moons ago.
Looks good to me.
Yep. The only thing is, do we have to say who this person was? Or we don't care?
Oh, the member of the public?
Yeah. Looks good to me.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Second it?
Great.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so, second thing is overview of changes to the work program. So, we're currently on work session number three. And tonight, we're going to discuss the Community Services and Facilities chapter, as well as the Parks Recreation Open Space chapter. And then, we're gonna kind of try to narrow down questions for the survey after those two. So, the only change that I had was, we are also supposed to talk about the Non-Residential Activity chapter tonight, but just, um, for the sake of time, we didn't think we'd be able to fit it in. So, we're going to move that to next session with Historical and Cultural Resources and Transportation and Circulation.
Okay.
And another small issue, um, that we probably need to resolve is, so, the, um, since the holidays, we moved the November meeting to, I think it was like the 26th.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the December meeting, we have, we have a December meeting down here for work session number five. So, if we meet on your planning commission meeting, if we try to get that back on track, like the second Mondays, then that'll only give us, like, one week to prepare anything before we have to send out materials to you. So, we could either, um, meet in November, skip December, and then meet the second Monday in January, or we could just push November back to the second week in December.
Well, November 11th is Veterans Day.
We already pushed that back.
Yes, that one's already been pushed off.
That's already been scheduled.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be--
Yeah, November's gonna be the fourth Monday.
Fourth, it's the 25th.
So, it's already advertised, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah--
So, we can just bail on, uh--
On December and then start again in January.
December's a crazy month anyhow.
Yeah. Because we're meeting the 25th, and then your meeting is on the 9th, and it just wouldn't give us, like, any time. And then, the 4th Monday is like the day before Christmas Eve. I don't know if anyone's--
No, as I said, yeah, let's see, you got the December, you have the 9th and the 23rd, and we're not doing either one, right?
I've been to zoning hearing boards on Thanksgiving Eve.
Alright, so, we're going to skip that, right?
Yeah, so then, we can move the December topics, work session number five, to, um, I guess, the second Monday in, uh, in January.
January, which should be--
13th. 13th.
Wait a minute, where are we here? The 13th?
Yeah.
Yes, the 13th.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll have to get that into the schedule for the 2020 meetings.
Well, that's a regular meeting, so, yeah.
Yeah, I figured it'd be nice to get back on track with the second Mondays.
Yeah, it wouldn't.
Okay.
Those darn holidays interrupted everything.
I know, Veterans Day.
It's a hell of a thing, to tell you.
Okay, glad we got that all figured out.
Okay, so, good there.
Okay. So, uh, let's discuss the Community Services and Facilities chapter. Okay, so, uh, the chapter in the comp plan, it started out listing all of the facilities with bullet points, but this chapter, I just decided to just kind of go right into it, like, give a little introduction to Community Services and Facilities. And then, instead of listing out everything we're gonna talk about, I just, I just started off with the Borough Administration. Um, so Borough Administration, um, start off by saying the Borough Manager and their responsibilities. We give the address of the Administration Building. And then, the, the next part down, like, the second chapter of Borough Administration, um, the Financing Borough Services and Facilities part, that was all taken verbatim, like, from the old comp plan.
Quick question, does Borough Manager get capitalized in that case?
Yeah.
Borough Council--
Borough Manager's appointed--
In doubt, yes.
Yeah.
And Borough Administration.
But we also have, um, a Finance Director now, too.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
So, maybe I should reach out to them and--
Yeah.
See if they can add anything helpful. Okay.
You know, his extension might--
Oh, yeah.
That, that changed from 10 years ago.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, I would definitely want to reach out to him and see what they can add to the, to the Financing Borough Services and Facilities.
Yeah, I think part of his, um, job description is doing grants, too.
Yeah, he's involved in all aspects of finance.
Okay. I'll have to reach out to him then. Um, yeah, we're, we're just talking about, um, the, uh, the, how the Financing Borough Services and Facilities, like, uh, how you would have, like, a capital improvement program. And we just kind of took that from the last comp plan. And I talked it over with Mike, and he said it might still be relevant to keep it in there, but I'll definitely reach out to the Finance Manager.
Yeah, I mean, I know, in, in the last couple months, that they received, uh, some nice grants, two or three.
Yeah, I added, um--
This week for something.
I, I think I solved, like, some of those that pertain to this chapter, um--
I think they got some Walk Works money today or yesterday.
Yeah, Walk Works. I have that in the Parks and Recreation chapter, the next one we're gonna talk about. Okay, so, uh, the second page, uh, talks about public works. So, this chapter, or this part of the chapter just discusses, um, the Marsfield Municipal Authority. It says, like, its location, its responsibility, a lot of it was taken from the previous comp plan.
I had one question, I was looking at this.
Yeah.
Talking about the MMA supplying clean, safe drinking water to residents, what about sewer?
Um--
Well, it's not clean, it's not drinkable.
Well, no, but the point is, it's another big part of their thing, is that they do sewer. Because the next sentence talks about maintaining 32 miles of roadway and then storm drain.
Yeah.
It actually does, at the end of it, says, "Assists MMA with water and sewer."
I know, I just, that's why I thought it should be consistent, right in front, say, "MMA Handles Water and Sewer."
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you wanna put--
It's like, I'm reading, it's like something was missing there in front.
Yeah, so you want to put, like, the second to last sentence up after the third sentence? Or the second sentence?
Yeah, whatever, just get it, and when you talk about their initial scope of services, just have sewer and water.
Okay.
Yeah, slash.
Yeah.
Because it says they share the site with the wastewater.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to Police Services, um, State, the Mission, um, the Vision of the Marsfield Police Department, um, have, uh--
Your numbers, yeah, double check them numbers.
Yeah.
Need to double check those numbers.
Yeah, I don't think we have, I don't think we have three corporals, 12 patrol officers.
Do we also share with, uh, who is it false? Do we work with them, too?
They only provide usually--
Yeah, right, no, we have our own group.
Yeah.
I got this, um, off of the website.
We have a lot of part timers, too.
I don't know the last number, because I know, we're down to 10 full time.
Eight.
Eight, full time?
Okay. So, their website's probably not up to date?
Well, that's the one that's on paid leave, or paid, uh, whatever.
Uh, attending, yeah.
Yeah.
Criminal, uh, date, court date.
Yeah, so, yeah, those, those numbers all change.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, plus, so, so, and there's also one out on, um, I think it's an old injury, so, we might actually be at seven full time right now.
Patrol officers?
Yes.
Okay, officer--
And there's a part time in there as well, so--
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe the chief could give you--
Well, chief could--
Yeah, I'll have to call him.
Well, you'd hope so.
I would hope.
Yeah, well, hey.
You'd never know.
And then, um--
Yeah.
I know, um, the school just hired, um--
Resource officer.
Resource two, one and a half, one armed, one unarmed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like a third party.
Yeah, yeah, they subbed it out.
Yeah.
Okay, just for the school?
Yeah, they used to have a police officer from the Marsfield up there all to full time.
Yeah, okay.
And budget constraints and back and forth, they, they pulled him, put him back on the street.
Yeah.
And then, I think, two weeks ago, the school district awarded, um, some, uh, third-party agency, subbed it out.
Okay, I'll have to double check what that is.
The US Security Care is the name of the company.
Name of the company.
Okay.
Superintendent--
You have a note?
I don't.
Superintendent, you said? You said Superintendent?
I am terrible at getting back over here, the traffic was so screwed up.
Check and give you his name, like, if it's under--
Um, that's okay, I'm sure you can find it, like, on the school website.
Number and--
Okay.
I'm sure the chief could probably--
Actually, well, you might--
The chief might well know that.
Yeah.
It's at the school, but I mean, I'm sure they have to check in with it, yeah.
Also, Micah, Micah knows, too. Between talking to Micah and the chief about the--
I didn't know it was a town, that route one's always bad.
Okay.
I could start building more than 15 minutes into my trip, you know?
Yeah. Hey, Mike.
Hello.
We're, we're talking about Community Services and Facilities.
Okay.
Page number three.
Page number three?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Alright, so we'll move on to Fire Protection. Um, the first paragraph just describes, um, about the Marsfield Fire Company and the location, um, that checks out with everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And I also put one of the grants in here, council approved, um, the building of a $1.7 million new headquarters. And that, they also got a grant for $200,000 to buy, um, a new--
I think it's got a typo in there.
Oh, really, where?
A recuse pumper?
Yeah.
Is that what it's called?
No.
I was supposed to say rescue?
Rescue, no, thank--
I'm a little dyslexic, so that makes sense.
Recuse?
A recuse?
A raccoon pumper.
Fire term? Yeah. Okay.
That's rescue.
So, ambulance services, um, Marsfield Ambulance Squad closed, so I just stated how that was a nonprofit that provided the transportation and emergency care. And, um, so they've been replaced with Capital Health Emergency Medical Services. Um, so I just kind of went into a little detail there. Um, I figured I really shouldn't, like, say why they closed.
Lack of funding?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, that's one way of putting it.
Speaking of funding, uh, is, uh, does a borough provide any assistance for--
Yes.
Your fire protection or your ambulance--
Yes, yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. For around the last couple of years, they did a couple mills or whatever for--
Yeah, we need to put that in there.
I wouldn't put lack of funding.
I know, yeah, I saw that in the news, I was looking it up.
For both.
Hundred twenty--
I don't know how much, no.
It's a hundred twenty, hundred twenty-two, just for the ambulance squad. Just for the ambulance squad. I'm not sure of the numbers for the R.
Hundred twenty-two thousand?
Micah will be able to give you the information, the Finance Director, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay, so, Micah's the Finance Director?
Yeah, I don't know his last name, so--
Okay.
Hites.
How do you know this?
It's Hites, it has a T, yeah. H-E-I-T-Z, I guess.
Okay. Alright, so moving down to Healthcare, um, listed the hospitals in Lower Bucks and neighboring Trenton that are used by, uh, Marsfield residents.
Yeah, I, I guess they also have the Capital Healthers in Hopewell also.
In Hopewell?
Yeah, they have the, uh, trauma centers in Hopewell.
I think, uh, is it Jefferson Health, is it not Aria Health? Is that what it's--
Um, no, it's not Jefferson Health.
Yeah, it's Jefferson, Jefferson--
It's not Aria?
No, Jefferson.
No, they merged.
It's now all different?
Yeah, I don't know.
Really? That was the last time I got--
It's Jefferson Health something.
Yeah.
Bucks, Lower Bucks or something.
Yeah.
So, Aria's gone.
Aria's gone now?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, Jefferson, they merged.
Okay.
What was it before Aria?
Lower Bucks Hospital.
Lower Bucks, yep.
They were downtown Bristol.
And Bristol.
In the next paragraph, after it talks about the urgent care facility, we're missing a title about the YMCA. This goes directly into the paragraph about the YMCA.
What are we missing?
Like, a title, you've got, you know--
Oh, yeah, a section.
Just sections saying, I don't know, YMCA, we're able to call it.
Yeah.
And then, you have this one sentence about the Y.
Yeah.
Which doesn't fit into the, uh, medical stuff.
Okay.
It's, uh, you know what, I think with that, it's possible, because I was given, um, I was, uh, making changes to the draft, it's possible that the, the change that I showed for Naren just moved the paragraph completely out, but it's--
It could go in a different place, probably.
It could go under Wood Schools. Because they, they want to have the, uh, childcare facilities.
Maybe it was under, I don't know. You're right, though, it's, it looks out, it looks out of place.
It's kind of--
We've always assumed what happened, we'll fix it, you know?
Okay. Alright, schools, we have Grandview Elementary, Morrisville Intermediate School, Morrisville Middle slash High School, those are the public schools. Um, we talk about the private school a couple paragraphs down. Um, I got the, the numbers for enrollment, um, enrollment of each school, the closure of the schools, and then talk about Holy Trinity Elementary, which is the private school, and their enrollment, and then, um, the needs of the schools, which are, like, renovation and their need of renovation, and how their enrollments, um, are below capacity.
Well, they just, what did they do this past summer to--
They're doing renovations right now, a lot of HBAC and stuff, I think, pretty big, big budget stuff, maybe, Micah could fill you out on those numbers, too.
Okay, Mike, they're gonna have a long chat.
Yeah. Yeah, they just spent all summer on it.
Yeah, they worked on it all summer, they were way behind schedule.
And they all, um, they also have, I don't know if that should be in here or not, they have the, uh, Century 21 Grant for, like, uh, summer, uh, for the kids to go up to the high school.
Century 21 Grant?
Yeah, um, that's through, uh, Ivan's House, I think. They, they have that there, and the, the kids go, I think, for the whole month of, um, I think it's the whole month of August?
Mm-hmm.
You gotta double check on that, but, yeah, that's done through the, uh, Ivan's House, Century 21 Grant.
What is, what house?
Ivan's House.
I-V-I-N-S.
And I think they also have some Century 21 Grants, I know they get breakfast and, and lunch, too.
Right, right.
It's located on West Trenton Avenue.
Okay, the Ivan's House.
Yeah.
Is the Catholic school, is that the only private school in borough?
Holy Trinity.
Holy Trinity, yeah, I don't know, does Presbyterian have anything going on?
Nothing.
They used to have a daycare years ago, but I don't know if they still do or not.
I believe they do anymore.
No, okay.
Okay.
Not a daycare, but like a pre-k.
Yeah, pre-k.
Was it like the Head, the Head Start?
Uh, no, I thought the Head Start--
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No, Head Start used to be at Matter Park, then they moved down there, too.
Right, yeah, because that was on the old map.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then, we talk about library services. Um, the Morrisville Free Library has been a grassroots effort since 1904, when it first opened, and I added in, they, they have, they received a grant, the Keystone Grant, of $52,000 to replace a roof on the, um, 108-year-old building. And with the grant, they'll be able to continue to provide enviable services to the local community. And then, the next paragraph just states what the library offers and the location of it. Does that check out?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Parks, we just kind of have a couple sentences that, instead of going into detail, we just leave, um, leave it to say, it'll be discussed in chapter, I think it's eight, and that's gonna be the next chapter. And then, uh, telecommunications, so this was in the last plan, and we just kind of updated a little bit of the language about what telecommunications is, um, and how the borough should update its telecommunications regulations and the zoning ordinance, um, in accordance with the federal, uh, state and federal law, and just continue to be proactive of emerging technologies and legislation.
Whatever happened to that tower that they were gonna build on, um, the Marsfield Shopping Center? Was that ever--
They did.
Is that--
It's in operation now.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on, it's on top of the, uh, Tower Store.
Exactly.
Is that the one tower that we have in the borough?
It's on top of, uh--
Top of, uh--
Stockholm, on top of the, uh--
Kind of them.
We have how many?
A whole nest of, there's like eight of them.
Yeah, and on top of the senior building.
Oh, well, I knew there was one there, yeah, okay.
Um, one typo in the last paragraph, we're talking about rights and way.
Mm-hmm.
The last, in, uh, existing, co-locating existing structures over in public should be rights and way as well, you have just--
Oh, okay.
Right here.
So, do you think--
Well, I read, went through them after I got them, so I'm prepared.
Should we include the locations of the towers? Would you want to do that?
No, because they're constantly kind of moving around, too.
Okay.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, and then, we just have the recommendations and the bullet points.
Good job.
Captain Devens, though.
Okay, great, I'll have to talk with Micah and get those changes made.
Would Micah also be a person that Naren could talk to about any other community needs that we're not really quite--
The financial aspects of it?
Yeah, financial aspects.
Sure. You know--
Kind of like what's the long term, because I, you know, he's looking at the long term.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, he's, he's not, uh, hasn't been here that long, but he might know financially what is gonna be needed.
Yeah, what's gonna be needed, so, it's maybe fill on some, uh, some more information in this chapter.
Okay. Uh, if you want to take a look at the map and let me know if that looks okay, the 2008 comp plan, the Community Services and Facilities map was combined with the Historic Resources map, I think. But I figured I would make two separate ones, see how they looked, instead of combining them together.
Two separate ones.
Me, too.
You just have the A field, just mark the A field, I don't know, do you want to put, quotes? I guess, I don't know, it is quotes, I guess.
Okay.
I don't know if you can put, like, a little, it's not a school.
Yeah. Is there quotes around the A?
There is on the map.
I mean, like--
It's the A field, isn't it also called the Robert Marsfield, or not? I don't know what the official--
Where we started at?
The A field, yeah.
For athletic field, A field, yeah.
Okay, maybe I should call it Athletic Field?
But people--
Why do you call it A field?
Probably what it's supposed--
But they know--
Everybody knows it as the A field.
We know it as the A field.
Okay.
Patriots Park.
It's like, you know, Happy Days, Mr. Cunningham, hey, Mr. C, you know? Remember that? Dating myself.
Yes.
Very much.
Naren has no idea what you're calling it.
Yeah, happy who?
I know what Happy Days is.
Yeah, Fonzie?
It's either Saturdays or Sundays, Happy Days.
I love Ron Howard.
Nicky Knight. Mr. C.
Yeah, that's good.
That's good.
It's a nice map, yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, thanks, it's my heart.
Evolution of technology over 10 years between these compounds.
Yeah, definitely.
Alrighty, we'll move on to Chapter Eight, Parks Recreation and Open Space. So, the introduction was taken, uh, verbatim from the first paragraph of the 2008 comp plan, so we kept that in there. And 2008 comp plan, it kind of splits it up into permanently protected lands, and I think it's temporary protected lands, and it also has, like, planning for open space in there in the middle. So, we decided to start it out with planning for open space, um, and park and recreation. So, we go on to describe how it's a critical component of the comprehensive plan, and it can help Morrisville's borough, or Morrisville borough's reputation as a green and active community. In the past years, various regional and local initiatives and plans have been put forth to capitalize on the borough's recreational open space assets, and then, we kind of, we list those plans in the first paragraph under the Planning for Open Space. And then, we go on to kind of, um, look at the, those regional and local initiatives and plans in more detail. So, the first one is the Morrisville Open Space Plan, um, which was adopted in 2009. And it just goes on to state the objectives, uh, which are in the italics in the plan, and then, the accomplishments that were achieved. So, first objective is to maintain existing open space while ensuring that a balanced variety of recreational opportunities are available on public lands, and then, it has a few bullet points of what was achieved, so establishment of the dog park, um, Morrisville was designated as a borough town, and then, in the, the Walk Works Grant, that was just recently secured. And on page two, it just continues to go down the list of, um, what the, uh, the objectives of the open space plan are, and then, those accomplishments achieved.
This is the, um, open space--
Open Space Plan, yeah, from 2009. And then, the, um, the objectives and the accomplishments achieved continue on to the And then the, um, the objectives and the accomplishments achieved continue on to the third page.
There you mentioned protecting the A field again.
What's that?
Protecting the A field.
Uh huh.
Well, so we should probably keep A field consistent with A field.
Okay, instead of, what does it say?
It said A.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I think it's fine the way it is, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I mean, it just comes up two times. It should be, make sure it's consistent. Instead of the A field.
Yeah.
Enhancing Morrisville Lake.
And then we just kind of close, uh, that open space plan out with just saying that the borough should continue with its efforts to implement and achieve the Borough of Morrisville Open Space Plan.
The old pit.
The old pit.
It's like way back.
Where the old Post Road used to be.
On the outskirts of town, like Post Road back there.
The Morrisville Lake?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess.
It's very hard to see.
Yeah.
You can very, Kevin, get a good angle and see the water.
Here, so when you swim in it, you come out glowing.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, that's all the.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
That was the Louers.
We can start enhancing that lake by finding those conditions and opportunities. So is everybody good with the open space plan?
That's their plan, right?
It's nice to have the links in here.
Just want to make sure there's no more typos or anything.
Yeah, that was the, um, they adopted that, right? Borough Council adopted that?
Yeah. Alright, next plan that, uh, this talks about, or not plan, but, um, the Delaware River Heritage Trail and East Coast Greenway. So the Delaware River Heritage Trail was initiated, um, to unite the New Jersey and the Pennsylvania sides of the Delaware River. And it is a sixty mile long loop highlighting the cultural and natural resources along the upper portion of the Delaware River. And the trail will link twenty-four communities, um, and it's also a component of the circuit, which is an eight hundred mile network of, um, biking and pedestrian trails in the greater Philly region. And then the second paragraph just goes on to describe where the trail, um, goes through in Morrisville.
Is it possible to put the website address for the circuit in here?
Um, yeah, that's possible. We have the Delaware River Heritage Trail on the back and the Greenway.
You have two websites.
Yeah, but I didn't see.
Yeah, but that's not for the circuit. Yeah, we can add it at the end there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the Delaware River Water Trail, this is another initiative of the Delaware River Greenway Partnership. And it's for the non-title portion of the Delaware River. So this non-title portion of the river and the associated water trail covers almost two hundred miles of the entire freshwater portion of the Delaware River from, um, New York to Trenton and Morrisville. So we recommend, um, well, this recommends that the borough should explore opportunities for promoting awareness of this water trail. And that the borough should continue, consider working with, um, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Lower Makefield Township for providing a safe crossing of River Road to the boat launch area. Because this trail isn't actually, I think it describes, it's not actually in Morrisville, but it's very, there's a boat launch that's like four hundred feet away from it. So it just kind of talks about like making that connection for Morrisville residents. At the bottom of the, of the page, the title Delaware Water Trail. So it says Morrisville Borough's unique position along the Delaware River at the Falls of Trenton affords its access to both the tidal and the non-title portions of the river. So this water trail is an effort between, um, Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission, um, National Park Service, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and, um, the partnership for the Delaware Estuary, um. And so there's, there's not a boat launch facility within the borough along the tidal portion of the river. But access to the tidal portion of the river for fishing is provided at the Morrisville Riverfront Preserve. Um, and then that just states the intersection of that, it's also Moore Avenue and East Philadelphia Avenue. And then we just don't want to say that, uh, the borough should continue to manage the waterfront preserve and continue its involvement as part of that tidal Delaware Water Trail. So moving on to the Bucks County Waterfront Revitalization Plan from 2005. The first paragraph states the purpose of the plan and how this plan has specific recommendations to improve the overall study area and make it more attractive to residents, businesses, and visitors. The bullet points are, um, the six themes of the plan. So the plan envisions several park and recreation and open space opportunities. And so since the development of this plan in 2005, um, towards the bottom, it states that some progress has been made toward implementing the recommendations contained in the plan as it applies to Morrisville Borough. So.
One quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you have Staley in this paragraph right here.
Which paragraph?
Staley, the one we were just talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Next page, refer to Tate and Lyle. I think we should be consistent with that.
Okay.
Tate and Lyle.
Tate and Lyle, okay.
Yeah.
Good catch. So then continuing on to the next page, we have like, uh, the recommendations and then below it in the bullet points is the implementations of this plan. Well, I guess that's just one. Yeah, that's the bottom of page five. And then it kind of talks about how there should be discussions with private property owners. Like the Pennsylvania Railroad Company Amtrak, Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge Commission, um, Tate and Lyle parcel. Does that look good?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then the last, or second to last plan is the Morrisville Borough Walkworks Active Transportation Plan. So, uh, 2009, nineteen, in January, Morrisville was awarded the Walkworks Grant for the purpose of creating an active transportation plan. So the plan includes four goals, which are listed below. Improve what we have, make the connections, create a brand for active transportation routes, and inform and educate. And we have just the, the recommendation to work to accomplish those objectives and goals.
The last paragraph and the last, last paragraph after goal four.
Mm-hmm.
Chapter, period, transportation and circulation.
Okay, I think that's supposed to just be chapter.
Supposed to be a blank for putting a chapter number.
Blank, yeah.
It just got very short.
Okay.
Which I think it'll be chapter ten, those transportation circulation.
Okay.
Okay, and then just talk about the Williamson Park Town Square Concept Plan. So we start off by discussing how, or kind of describing how the borough was recently provided that concept plan and how it could have significant impacts on the recreational facilities, which, um, the largest recreational facility would be Williamson Park. Um, and to realize this vision, the existing recreational amenities throughout the borough would be impacted as follows, so, Williamson Park, Morrisville High School, Southmore Avenue, Manor Park School. And then although it's just.
It's not really Manor Park School, I mean, it's Manor Park School, but it's also the, um.
It's the Cloverleaf.
The Cloverleaf sign.
Okay.
Because the Manor Park School, I think, was also included in having a ball field where the school currently exists.
Okay.
But the Cloverleaf was where the Ford strikes, or the Ford field would be.
Yeah, okay.
So it's my thought on this is that, um, we might be revisiting this by the end of the plan.
But yeah.
Things are going to change.
By changing, yeah.
That'll be in flux.
So then the next part at the end of, uh, page seven is to talk about existing open space and park and recreation resources. And the way that this is kind of split up, um, or is classified, it's, uh, public lands and privately owned lands or privately protected lands. So if you look at the map, that's kind of how I split it up visually, so kind of follow along with the tables. And under public lands, um, the order that it goes in the plan is the same order on the legend with the map. So we talk about the Delaware Canal State Park, um, go into detail about that, uh, and the acreage of that.
One quick question, in your little, little spreadsheet row here.
Yeah.
You left the location blank on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Should have like multiple locate or something to fill in the blank.
Something, yeah.
Because the other ones all have an exact location, but of course they're more discreet.
Yeah, we can add something in there. Okay, and then, um, the green on the map, that's the municipal parks and open space, so Williamson Park, Manor Park Playground, and Morrisville Dog Park and Patriots Park.
On the map, you've got one little thing here with Patriots Park, there's three parcels there.
Oh, fill in that third one?
No, the, the, well anyhow, we need, the third, the one that's white.
Or that's, um.
And the green at the top are both summer seat owned.
Oh, okay.
The rest of it, where it says Patriots Park is municipal owned.
Yeah.
It's all going to be part of Patriots Park, I'm not sure how you.
You're saying it all should be green?
Well, I don't know, because the other two parcels are not municipal.
Yeah.
It's, it's not including summer seat, it's just the, it's just the school.
North of that is the parking lot.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be green.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Alright, so.
No, that's, the summer seat owns the two parcels on the west side of the, uh, of the park. And then the Patriots Park is the old school site, which is the east side going all the way down.
So just the, the larger parcel is supposed to be green out of those three, what were you saying?
Yeah, if that's the way they're going to do it graphically.
Okay.
But we, the Marshall.
Yeah.
The school still owns Manor Park, which I don't see, I think it's, that should be colored in too.
Oh, that's, uh.
That's above, I think, of, on East Cleveland Avenue at the end.
Yeah, because it's down at the end.
No, it should be yellow. It should be right here.
Yeah, look at that, that rectangle.
Are you talking about Manor Park?
Manor Park Elementary School, that should be yellow.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, if you go to, look, East Cleveland Avenue, that's.
Right, the end of East Cleveland.
Right next to the, um, municipal authority property on the other side.
Okay.
That big square, that, that should be, uh, yellow, also that should be at Manor, Manor Park, that school.
Okay, um, and then the next one, we talk about, uh, public schools, so Grandview Elementary, um, Morrisville Intermediate, which I see there's a spelling error in the table, I'll have to change that. Um, and then the, and then the A field, so those are all in yellow. And then, uh, moving on to other publicly protected lands, they just have those in orange under municipal protected open space. So there's, uh, the gray stones and then the Riverfront Preserve.
Bernard, the, I'm looking at this map, uh, under privately protected lands, under, it's sort of brown, I guess, Morrisville Borough owned properties.
Yeah.
What, what does that fall under?
Um, so that'll be on.
Is this Melvin's work back here?
That's the, um.
Are there just borough?
That's the new basin.
Oh.
Are there just borough properties that aren't public?
That's under on page twelve, um, other temporarily protected lands. So there's the Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge Railroad, um, then Morrisville Municipal Authority, and then just Morrisville Borough.
Alright.
I think that, that's the, the lake, is the borough, is the lake.
Okay.
Down the bottom, and then the Melvin Avenue, that should be the, uh, basin.
Right, that is just the basin.
And I think, and then.
And the lake, these are all paper streets down here, with the exception of, well, Post Road stops.
Mm-hmm.
But coming down Royal Avenue stops partway down, there's nothing going across into where the lake is.
But then you have, what's this little parcel right there?
Which one? Well, that little.
Well, yeah, I'm looking over here.
At the end of the loop there.
Okay.
The end of the Park Avenue, uh.
That wouldn't be considered park?
And Central Avenue.
Yeah. That wouldn't be considered park?
I don't know who owns that, we'd have to look on the.
We'd have to look at the parcel map.
Yeah, okay, the borough.
The new parcel map.
Because all the parcels are listed here under the Morrisville Borough, so those are all the brown ones.
See, that's not actually a part of the park, it's adjacent to it across the road, with that little tiny thing.
Uh, what the heck's up with?
The same thing with those other.
What's over here? Okay, this is, I know what this is, this is like an open field right there.
Right, it's like a flood plain kind of thing.
No, over here's where everybody parks.
Yeah, right, yeah, but it's real low.
The grist wheel is?
No, further down.
Down where there's, there's a piece of East Franklin that stops at the canal and then it picks up on the other side of the canal. It's across from the ball field.
Yeah, people park overflow parking.
Yeah.
The one that's, um, adjacent to Williamson Park, that one under Morrisville Borough, that's, that's listed as Central Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is Central, that, Central is the other part of the loop.
I mean, essentially, that, that can be part of it.
Park Avenue.
So, so my thought is that, um, we need to reorganize this a little bit, because it's privately protected. I think we should, because these are, some of these are public entities, maybe, maybe other, maybe they would fit under, like in other protected lands as, as we have in our table here.
Oh, like starting from Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge Commission?
Correct.
Those last four will be other?
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Other protected lands, and in the two categories will be privately protected lands.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, so is that.
They don't miss right here.
Set a little bit more sense.
But, but that one area on, going back to Park and Central.
Park and Central.
I mean.
Little Browns.
The end of.
Yeah, little Browns, well, yeah.
Yeah.
That's different than like the, the, the basin or the, uh, the Marshall Lake. I mean, something could be put there, I would think. Part, make it part of the park if they wanted to put, uh.
They could, yeah, sure.
Kidging there.
Does anything right now?
Pretty small going around, pretty tight turn going down there.
Does it function as anything?
I don't know, I have no clue.
Yeah.
Right now, it's nothing.
We'll take another look at it, we'll see if, if it's, it's got to fit in one category or another.
I guess, no, just Marshall owned, I, I, it's just.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we have as our other protected lands.
Then you have, um, is the Bulldog building on there too or not?
South of the Calhoun.
The Bulldog building, I'm, I'm.
Which one's up, look at that?
Yeah, right.
That's not on it, is it?
This one?
Yeah.
I can't find.
The Bulldog would be right here.
I can't find Hillcrest.
It's.
Oh, here it is, I got it.
Down by Patriots Park.
Hillcrest.
It's down, that third block, first block.
It's either borough owned or Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge.
Yeah.
I'll have to drag back into it, because these two are Delaware River Joint Toll, right here, that's the Delaware River Joint Toll Bridge.
What parcel is that?
This is where the, um, the old pumping station was.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll have to look into that one.
That's MMA of the city.
So that's borough owned then, right?
No, well, I guess. Find this parcel here. Excuse me, Steve.
Yep.
Hillcrest, there's Hillcrest.
First block of Hillcrest.
First, uh, oh, oh, nine dash oh forty-five. That should be Marshall property also.
Right.
That's the Bulldog building.
Oh, nine dash oh forty-five.
Oh, nine dash oh forty-five.
This is, this one is oh, oh, eight, six, twenty-nine.
And those should both be Morrisville?
I don't know, what do you think, MMA, right?
No, it's EDC owns that.
EDC, well, that's borough then.
Not really. EDC's a lot, EDC is a corporation that can own property.
Oh, that's right, because we did that for this property down here, we owned it for like a nanosecond, yeah. Remember that?
Okay.
Alright, then forget it, it's correct.
So keep that one as, um.
Yeah, keep it as, yeah, yeah.
Alrighty, um, so we kind of, we kind of skipped right into the, the Morrisville Borough, so going, going back.
What page are we on?
We're on page, we're on page ten, other, other publicly, or privately protected lands. Private recreational facilities, uh, those are the pink ones. So we have YMCA, Morrisville Lanes, Delmore Bowling Lanes, and Morrisville Senior Services Center. So the, the table's on the bottom of page ten, and then on the map, it translates to the pink parcels.
Private recreational, never mind.
Does that check out, the private recreational?
Yeah, I think so, I can't remember, can't think of anything else.
Okay, and then the last one, uh, it's kind of like a periwinkle color, is the Morrisville Cemetery for private protected open space.
I suppose that was seven acres.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
On the dot.
I didn't know the dog park was two acres.
That's a pretty big dog park.
Yeah.
Well, that's just a proportion of the dog park.
Isn't half of that open space in half of the dog park? I don't know.
It's a fenced area. It's just a dog park with everything outside the fences, that, that was purchased with open space money.
Right.
The dog park itself.
Maybe it's not all two acres.
I mean, it's a big park, but is it really two acres?
Well, the parking next to.
It's a cemetery, seven acres, that one's got me. People are dying to get in there.
And they are. You have a dog, you have the whole, you have that whole section as dog park. Theory, it's not.
It's like half of that.
It's just half of that, the other, the other half is, um, protected open space.
Okay, I'll have to look into that one.
Yeah, that should be municipal protected open space.
Vacant land owned by the borough, and land owned by quasi-governmental agencies. The last sentence, under other protected lands.
Wait, the last sentence, other protected lands? What, what did you say about the last sentence?
It's talking about vacant land owned by the borough or land owned by quasi-governmental agencies.
Oh, so that, um.
That could be a quasi-governmental agency or something, couldn't it? The parking next to the dog park?
No, that's, that's.
Well, that, that goes with the, the next table. So that's on page, page eleven, and there's just like a, there's a large gap, because I guess the table was just put on this page. So that sentence should go like above this table, so people know that it's referring to this, to the other temporary protected lands.
Yeah, they've got the Melvin Avenue Basin in the church there.
Yeah, that, that was the basin.
Yeah.
Jefferson Avenue, which is just the, the Y between the streets.
Right, right.
North Delmore Avenue, or North Delmore. Okay, is that, Jefferson's Christian. Okay, South Pennsylvania. I don't know, South Pennsylvania.
Okay, and then, uh, summarize it up with the recommendations, so continue to implement the recommendations from the Morrisville Open Space Plan, remain an active partner in local and regional planning efforts, explore opportunities to help realize the goal of establishing a public river walk, develop a parks and rec plan to guide the development of new park and recreation facilities, uh, continue to explore opportunities for increasing access to water-based recreation, and implement the recommendations in the recently adopted Walkworks Active Transportation Plan.
Yeah, one more little thing, and then maybe this is what you were referring to.
Yep.
But the area here that's been called a Cloverleaf parcel actually comes out in front on South Pennsylvania Avenue.
For the Manor Park Playground? For the Manor Park Playground?
No, no, Manor Park Playground is not where you've got the...
No, yeah. Manor Park Playground should be the cloverleaf and these two, these two parcels here.
I think this wide...
This one here and that one there.
This wide one right here.
And maybe even this one here.
That comes out to South Pennsylvania. That's actually part of the cloverleaf parcel.
Okay.
It's, right now, there's some big rocks sitting along the road, and it's just grass and trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
Manor Park Playground is, let me see, Manor Park Playground is right here. That's the Manor Park Playground.
Yeah, it's up, up.
Yeah, your parking lot here for the senior center, and this, this little area here is the Manor Park Playground.
District Justice and then the parking lot and the playground.
Yeah, that little, the little...
Yeah.
Okay.
That little, what the hell?
I'm worried about that label down there because it'll...
Because it's just on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the cloverleaf property.
Is that an ad for adding this parcel?
Yeah, yeah. Because ultimately, that would be included in whatever is going on there to get access and stuff.
Okay. I'll click that.
Um, one question that I have is, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, did the Borough not apply for a grant to develop a plan for Williamson Park?
I think a couple of years ago, maybe. I'm not sure they received it yet.
No, I don't, I don't, I think they might have applied. I don't think they've received it or that...
It was a study?
Yeah, there was something done, but I don't think, there's not, something to do like a master plan for Williamson Park. But I don't know what the status of it is.
I don't know if it was just a study, grant was for a study, just given as an exception in housing, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe we should follow up with, um...
Micah.
Yeah, Micah or...
Well, actually, the engineers would know.
Oh, you know what?
We'll get one.
Gilmore would know.
Yeah. Oh, I need his number. I lost it.
Oh, yeah, he said, he wrote the South Parks Month chapter.
Did he?
He was saying, oh, you guys have been friends for like 20 years.
Oh, yeah, at least. We used to work together.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
His name is on our website, the extension.
Oh, I'm gonna go there, yeah, because he sent me a text message and I lost the text, like, on the words.
Oh, okay.
Stay with the park for a second. Got the stuff you gave me, I guess?
Yeah, I have copies of that.
Should we incorporate that in the parks?
If...
Because I was always curious, where did Marshall stand?
Yeah.
With park. Now, we just need the park, right? This was just dealt with park?
This was just, I think it was municipal and state parks.
Yeah, just like parkland.
Yeah.
And I want to know where Marshall stood in the ratio.
I think it's, it's the most.
And what do you think, what do you think we stand?
Oh, do you want to...
No, 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 go ahead. You already, you already dished it out. No.
Wow, you're surprised.
Sorry, we were, you guys win.
Morrisville.
I think we're good.
Oh, four point, Mike, do you have a copy of this?
Almost 5%.
Yeah, check it out.
Yeah, you're beating My Hard Manor.
No. Actually, 20 years ago was not five.
Well, I, I guess this year, we've definitely added Wings, or Patriots Park.
Right.
Right.
That, that brought it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Other than that, everything else has been...
Dog park?
Dog park.
Yeah, dog park.
Yeah, that's definitely municipal park.
Space along with the dog park.
Well, if you're including that whole thing, well, that's open space, open space. Does open space include in this percentage, like gray stones?
No, this was just...
It's just park.
Park.
Just park, yeah, just park. Not open space, okay.
Yeah.
Because if you, if you add that, we're gonna be even higher.
Yeah.
Yep. So, uh, is there something that you wanted to include in the chapter?
I thought so.
Like a little narrative?
Very interesting, yeah. Extremely interesting.
Because, you know, for years, I said, well, what's our open space? How much parkland do we have? You know, you look at Falls, and you know, Falls has a humongous area over there, new park, but what percentage of open space?
Right.
Compared to our little town.
And that's, that's nice to see acres of each borough to, as a point of reference.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know people get upset about the parks and where things may or may not go, and this could, I think this would be...
So this is just boroughs?
Yeah.
Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, yeah. Comparing everything else with the housing and stuff.
I use the same, the same boroughs, I was like, the housing.
Yeah, that's fine. Keep it all the same, yeah. But no, I was surprised at 5%.
No, that's great.
It's hardly 0.3.
I was gonna say...
They're all coming to our park.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like 0.3, but yeah.
Yeah, they're coming to our park.
Yep. Yeah.
I mean...
100%? Yes. This is crazy.
Yeah, Bristol Borough is running, you know, close second, but, let's see. That's interesting.
My Hard Manor.
We have more acreage in Marshall than Bristol Borough?
Apparently.
Yeah, the Borough itself.
Because you drive through Bristol, they got traffic lights, they got main roads going back and forth.
It just seems...
It seems bigger, like a bigger airport.
Well, they have so much riverfront acreage, or riverfront...
Yeah, that's true, too.
We have, Marshall has 1290 and they have 1246. I would have thought Bristol was bigger than Marshall.
I would have thought so as well.
But yeah, I, I'd like to see that in.
That's very interesting.
Yeah, I thought that was a good idea you brought up to do. All right, so if nobody has any other comments on the two chapters and the maps, we can move on to discussing a community survey.
Do we have to?
I know. So, when we met with council, they said that they would like to see survey as long as we ask questions that we don't have answered yet, or it's just something different from the last com plan. We don't want to ask the same questions. So, um, the, the last document that I prepared, it's kind of all full of the pie charts and the bar charts. These are kind of a summary of answers taken from four surveys, four recent surveys that I found in Morrisville. So we have the Active Transportation Plan, Public Meetings, July and August from this past year. The Morrisville Downtown Open Space, or sorry, Open House Meeting in 2017. The Downtown Survey in 2017, as well as the, um, the results from 2008 com plan. So, this is what we know from those surveys, and then I kind of created just like some, kind of like a rough draft of questions that we could ask. So we were thinking about, um, me and Micah discussed, keeping it organized by ward.
Yeah, that's your idea.
Yeah. And asking like quality of life questions. So these are, this is really a rough, rough draft.
We never asked if, what percentage of people own their home in Marshall?
Um, no, that, we asked like some of these from the com plan. They'll be repeated, um, just because we want to get some of those basic demographics.
We really don't have the handle on all the rental units in the Borough.
Yeah.
Like you say, what type of residence do you have? Are we gonna give them multiple choice there or what?
Yeah, kind of like single-family dwelling, multifamily, like...
Okay.
That type of answer, yeah. So, um, a woman who works for the county in the public information office, she, um, they're, they're gonna use Survey Monkey, and it allows you to distribute it online, and then, um, they have some type of account where, oh, it's, you can only take one survey per household, like one computer.
Right.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, so we're gonna go, we have to go through them, so we'll send them our questions, they'll format it, um, but that way, it'll only be one per, per residence, and then we can also have copies here for, I guess, people who don't know how to use computers or don't have computers.
Writing it or reading it before, yeah, okay.
Right. So I wanted to touch on, um... Transportation, like how, how you get to work, that'll be, that'll be multiple choice, like ride share, biking, walking, um, public transportation, driving.
Driving.
Um, how many, yeah, ride shares, how many children in your household, where you send them to school, why did you choose to live in Morrisville, how long have you lived here?
Is that gonna be a multiple choice question?
Yeah.
Why'd you choose to live?
Yeah, I think these are all gonna be multiple choice.
We're gonna have to because trying to collate this...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Crazy. Meaningful?
No, they're, they're definitely all gonna be multiple choice, but for time's sake, I just kind of spit out the questions.
Do you plan on returning to Marshall? That's good. I like that.
Because you could.
Yeah. So mainly multiple choice, but also some like that, uh, they'll have comments, like why or why not?
Yeah, you always need a couple of that.
Like verbatims, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then kind of going down to how would you rate your quality of life? Um, I think last time we talked about trying to find out, like, why people leave the Borough for certain activities, like what type of amenities are you experiencing in other areas that you're not experiencing in Morrisville? Kind of what stores or businesses do you patronize, um, or do you patronize any? If so, which ones? If not, why not? And then like a question that kind of caters to business owners, um...
Can you ask what kind of businesses they would like to see in Marshall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, um...
I don't know if that was...
We can kind of ask that question before.
We have, um, like, if you go to, um, I don't have the pages numbered, but page three, the Morrisville Downtown Open House Meeting, Displayboard Preferences.
Yeah.
Uh, or maybe it's...
We have a desired business design. Do we have page numbers on this?
No, I don't have page numbers.
Kind of like bars, taverns, restaurants, retail stores?
Yeah, page number four.
Massage, callers, yeah.
So, we have all that, like cultural arts is a big one, restaurants, retail stores.
Yeah, the top four, retail, restaurants, bars, taverns, and...
And this is from 2017, so this is pretty recent. But I did, um, have a question, like what type of amenities would you like to see in the Borough? But I don't know if we'll have to ask that since we do already have that information.
Since we don't have enough cigarette tattoo cards.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Room for improvement.
And maybe we can, like in terms of the quality of life questions, you know, what is it that, um... You know, what, what problem perceived, real or perceived, um, what they like most fixed, you know, whether it's...
Yeah, open yourself up to a can of worms on that one.
You do.
Well, you get down to the feeling, feeling safe question and the follow-up after that down there at the bottom.
I mean, would you have that question in a multiple choice? I feel like there's a lot of choices there.
Yeah, there are, I guess.
Like a Likert scale?
Yeah.
One to five?
One to like, three, you know, 10 to dislike or whatever, something like that, yeah.
I just, yeah, just, you know, I just would like to ask some questions where maybe the Borough could sort of strategically marshal its resources against a particular problem. You know, maybe there's a common theme that comes up, you know?
So it's actionable.
Yeah, you know, people don't like their, their trash collection.
No, they don't. Just on Facebook.
Yeah. The last question I have is how satisfied are you with community services?
Do you believe everything you read on, read on Facebook?
Where do you, where do you get your, where do you get your, uh...
Exactly.
Where do you get your Morrisville Borough?
Actually, that's not a bad question, because we know where, we know where.
Different newspapers and different...
The information, like you at the bar.
Or you receive your Morrisville news.
Where do you get your news about...
Yeah, that's a great question.
Which bar?
Mike, that's a legitimate question.
Yeah.
Because you, you came in late, but Kurt was telling us when we first started that he heard, uh, local watering hole?
The local water, Morrisville Tavern.
Like people were talking about, you know...
Section eight housing.
Yeah.
Section...
Yeah. We did in the park. But I know there's like Morrisville Facebook, and then there's the school district website and...
There's tons of them.
There's tons of them out there.
Local newspapers around here, too, that cover Morrisville in different ways and...
Right. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okey dokey. RF is Riverfront Access, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot to type out.
Yeah. But no, it's, it's, it's a sizable number. It's...
Yeah, that was the largest.
Yeah.
Like almost a quarter.
Farmers Market's kind of interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Entertainment's kind of like a mixed bag.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty vague. Um, no, there's no page numbers, but, yeah, you're on it.
I mean, I just, I just... Whatever, okay.
Yes.
I gotta take a look at this over.
Yeah, so, so this is just everything that we know from, from past surveys.
Were you gonna put this in the comprehensive plan or, or not?
No, this was just kind of for...
Consolidated?
For council.
This was just kind of like for our information?
Yeah.
To kind of create the survey, so like what questions to ask.
Yeah, the, the one point was, we didn't want us to ask questions that we've already asked.
Right, right.
We, we kind of brought that up at a prior meeting, so...
Yeah.
This is just a good overview. I think we're doing a really nice job of putting this together.
No, this is, I like this. This is, this is a great, great year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Really tax, that color copier.
Yeah, wow.
Well, it would have been on a great scale.
Taxpayers money you're wasting over there.
How long have you lived in the Borough? I'm trying to see, is the first one less than a year? Is that green?
Uh...
Is that 50s?
No, that is like the light blue. You can't even see it's 1%.
Okay, what's the green? Is that...
That's more than 20 years.
Wow.
Yeah.
50% of people in Morrisville.
Hence, hence how they vote.
There are a bunch of old parks in town.
This was over 10 years ago.
Huh?
This was the survey from over 10 years ago.
Oh, this was already the comprehensive plan, like, 11 years ago, okay. This is...
Well, I would, okay, so I would say that pie, that piece of pie is even getting bigger.
Yeah, probably.
No, a lot of houses been sold, you know, so...
Yeah?
Yeah, I don't know. I would say...
Well, you and I are still here.
Yeah, well.
I've been here 25 years.
I'm three years, and I'll be on that 20.
Yeah, there you go.
That's the question I wanted to ask in this com plan, so...
I really liked it.
Yeah, 10 years ago.
I liked this a lot.
Especially with, uh, how long have you lived here?
This was really nice.
Just, just in general, things have changed.
90% own homes. This is int, what's this mean? 90%?
90% own homes. So from the last com plan, I was asked, do you own or rent your home, and 90% said they own their homes, from the 2008.
Really? Wow. Some of those questions you'd want to compare 10 years ago.
So, yeah.
So actually...
Well, I mean, the...
Yeah, but I don't...
That is, if you're a homeowner, you're more likely to answer the survey.
Sorry, it's 89%.
Oh, okay.
This is from the...
The sample...
It's, it's strictly...
90% of the sample that answered the survey.
So also, this is the other issue.
So if you're a homeowner, you're more invested in answering something.
Yeah, like not everybody is...
Yeah, right, that makes sense.
Properties, but they rent them.
Right, so they're not gonna get the survey. It's gonna go to the owner of the property.
The owner of the property.
Which I think is, maybe is a better idea, that we do an online survey and promote it.
Right.
So that everybody kind of...
Promote it, put it on the website.
We want to exclude any renters.
Right.
Uh, that just wouldn't give us what we're looking for.
Right, exactly.
Well, you're gonna see, do you own your house or rent? I rent. What kind of house do you live in? I live in a Tudor or, or single house, okay. You can extrapolate it after the fact.
I rent and I live in an apartment complex.
Yeah, you could split it up, and they're like, these are the people that rent, and these are where they live.
Yeah, you can bring it up that way.
Here's how they answered the survey. Answered the survey, this, this is really cool.
Thanks.
I like this.
And you rent.
Microsoft Word template.
One bedroom apartment with one five in here.
So, I guess my question for you is, is that are we in the right track?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Spot on.
Are these enough questions compared to eleven years ago?
Uh, eleven years ago, there was only.
There's plenty of questions.
Fourteen.
I'm afraid there's.
No, 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 I'm asking how many questions we asked.
Well, some of them you're going to need a scale.
Scale, and some of them, I'm just.
Multiple choice comments.
We can get more out of this.
And then verbatim.
Right.
Maybe eliminate something else in the list.
So unfortunately, we might be spending like the entire next meeting just talking about survey questions. Just, just.
Be worth it.
Yeah. Just to develop those questions in a way that's.
Well, I guess maybe what you do is take these questions, answer them ourselves and see how.
Yeah.
What kind of answers we want to put in there.
I'm going to add to my mind, but.
Well, why don't we do that right now, kind of go into the more depth and, because this is the last thing on the agenda. It's only eight forty-five, the night is young.
Excuse me. So, so, so as young person has said.
Monday night football, hello?
Or we can put it to next month.
We know who's going to win the game.
You want to see the Redskins play too, or what?
Oh, God.
Hey, they beat Dallas. We didn't.
Yeah, that was embarrassing.
Yeah, you got to bet Dallas.
That was, I turned that off.
Yeah, that was not good.
When you put, what type of residence? Are you going to just put a single home, attached home, apartment complex?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or just, okay.
Maybe, it might be simple, might be a, a single house, a, a single family home, or it could be apartment. Like there are multiple units and multiple floors. We might have a way of describing those types.
Multi-family house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of those, people don't have to think too much.
Yeah, because.
Yeah.
Other than an apartment, but it's really a multi-family house, but to them it's.
Apartment complex.
Apartment complex.
Apartment complex.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and where's the restaurant area?
Yeah.
What do you want to put that in?
In here? Like, I live in an apartment in a house.
An apartment.
Versus an apartment in a complex.
Has a lot of houses that are converted over.
An apartment in a house versus an apartment in a complex.
I feel like someone buys a, a single family house.
Yes.
Yeah, they're chopping up the houses and apartments.
Fifty years ago.
A lot of absentee.
But they could live in a, in a complex or they could live in a house. To them, it's an apartment.
Yeah, you go like down Washington, you have some nice.
They get more specific.
Houses that may have four or five units in there.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Or, or if you just rent the whole house, I mean, wouldn't that be a part?
Do you own your house?
Do you own your house?
No, I live in a house. Right?
Do you own or rent?
What type of residence do you live in?
Right.
Single family home. Do you own or, or rent? I own.
You could rent a single family home.
Well, yeah, that's your question. Do you own or rent your home?
Yeah, and then what type of home?
Yeah, but people consider your apartments their home, so to be specific, single family home.
Yeah.
Or not, you know.
I follow you.
Yeah, you got me.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from though.
How about where?
I was coming the back door.
Where people in the household work, or are we just going to keep it in the borough?
I think that'll be multiple choice, like, that was a question in the last comp plan, I think. Yeah, Morrisville Borough, Ellsworth Bucks, Trenton, Ellsworth, New Jersey, New York, Philly.
Yeah.
Maybe neighboring counties. You could say like Philadelphia, Montgomery, work from home, retired.
Okay. That's better than in or out of the borough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think getting the specifics will be.
Next crucial question maybe, how long you plan on staying in Morrisville? What kind of, what kind of?
I think they might have that in here somewhere. How long have you lived in the borough? How long do you plan on staying in Morrisville?
Yeah, but what kind of, you know, what's my choice is going to be?
Oh, um, years?
Yeah, probably.
But you even have it, you have retired. Are you going to be planning to retire?
Three to five.
Now, how long you plan on staying in Morrisville?
Yeah. And where's the one where it says retired?
Right on.
Combine that question.
Do you plan on retiring in Morrisville?
That could be combined.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
You know, until death.
And then we're just going to move down the street.
Yeah.
Seven acre.
We're dying to get in there.
And I'm going to be right there.
Right there.
Does it say something?
The light blue.
Light blue obsession.
I think so.
Yes, it is. Are you interested?
Nah.
I, if you're interested, I can sell you some family plots.
Okay.
I don't know them.
I'm going to make money off them.
Now, how would you say, if you're not planning on retiring in Morrisville? If we combine the two questions above, then you have why, why not?
He said, do you?
Do we really care?
Why they plan, what's basically saying, are you going to stay here or are you not?
If not retiring, it's, it's, it's why you plan on leaving.
Why do you want to leave here?
Right.
Why would you want to leave?
Right, I think, because how long do you plan on staying?
With your family or, you know.
That's.
And if you're leaving, why?
Right.
YOLO.
If you want to leave, why is more of the question that we want to know.
Right.
You know.
School, high expense.
Which could be a, a big one.
Which is, we know it's a big one.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to be nice. We're on camera.
I'm pointing to you again.
Where does that go, that video footage?
I don't know and I don't want to know.
Up in the cloud.
Okay.
It goes to your supervisors.
It goes to Ellen's office.
Hey, Evan.
How would you rate the quality of life in Morrisville?
So that was a question from the last comp plan thing.
So what are these descriptor words, like poor?
So this one.
Average or?
Yeah, the one in this one.
Neutral.
That would have to be.
Excellent, very good, good, fair and poor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So fifty-two percent said good. Twenty-two percent said excellent.
Wait, is good right below excellent?
No, there's very good in between.
So good is like neutral?
Good is neutral, yeah.
Good is happy.
And how many, what was the percentage for that?
Fifty-two percent.
So if half of all people think, it's kind of like, yeah.
Yeah, right, so we were told that we were getting the, like the one to five, we were getting the three.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
What about the excellence?
Excellent, two percent. Two hundred forty people responded.
No, especially.
It's the one percenters.
And twenty percent of them have been here for how long? I mean, half have been here.
Two percent, you two guys. Excellent.
Yeah.
I'm a very good.
I'm not being good. I could be excellent.
Wow, you're really kind of.
Really some of the robberies in the past months.
Depends if it's the first one or the second one.
All the robberies in the past couple of months here, I have to go down one now, yeah.
Yeah, only five people said excellent.
Oh, my gosh, really?
Well, yeah, two hundred forty-eight people responded.
And only five?
Five said excellent. Sixty-two said very good, a hundred thirty said good, forty-four said fair and seven said poor.
So it's just like.
Aw.
I want to know if they're still here.
They are, they're down the road though. But you got to, that tw- I mean, half, half of the percentage of the people that are here, fifty percent have been here for over twenty years. They're caved.
Right.
They're curmudgeons.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We're going to quick give you guys.
They're biased.
We give you questions. And part of that process is going to be us looking at all those questions and seeing what's, what's valuable and what's not.
Ask this question if we're going to get all good, I mean.
Yeah, right, middle of the road answer there.
Right.
Yeah, we could, yeah, I mean, we could just skip that and get right to what do you think in terms of?
The nitty gritty.
What quality of life issues are important to you?
Yeah.
You know, what, what increases?
Yes.
What increases and what would not increase?
So we already know the majority, so it's like, eh, meh, we could just say, try to figure out how we can make it better.
How we can make it better.
Who's pays least?
The questions so that we get something meaningful.
Yeah, some good feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we're saying, you know, curmudgeons, they've been here for over twenty, they're half of the town.
Curmudgeons.
All right.
Oddly old codgers moving right along here.
So could take out the rating quality of life, try to make it more deeps.
Why am I missing?
So this is something, the next question, what we talked about last meeting. What amenities to experience in other areas that you don't experience in Morrisville? Trying to figure out why people are leaving to experience certain entertainment and how to keep them.
Question that I have?
Yeah, because, well.
But what I think better is to say, uh, what kind of entertainment you would prefer to walk down the street to? What type of restaurants would you like, you know, so we're getting an answer, not just.
Well, if you, if you put in a restaurant, you put like a blank line, what type of restaurant? So they may want French, they may want Indian.
Well, upscale, fast food.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how much useful information you're going to get out of that. Maybe, uh, uh, I'm talking, you leave amenities, it could be like one category, it could be, you know, you leave town to go to restaurants or you leave town to.
To go to the theater.
To go to the theater, leave town, go to the movies or, or some other type of.
Would you prefer to stand down to see?
Watch a stage production or a, a band or, or a different, find out what kind of entertainment they do want. You know, we might find out that this town really wants theater, you know, like, I went to the Buckskin Playhouse the other day. You go, you eat there, you go to the theater and you go to a bar afterwards and then you call Uber.
You talk about Williamson Park.
Now, how do you put that into a questionnaire?
Well, you ask what, what type of, 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 okay, theater, what type of entertainment do you like? Theater, live theater, movies or, um, a live musical, whatever you would call that. Live music, yeah.
I don't know how that would fit in a questionnaire like that, though.
I, I don't know, I mean, we'll, we'll keep it, we'll see if we can develop a question and then we can talk about it, yeah. Like I said, we're not going to keep everything that we, that we're talking about here tonight.
Well, it's like even with the restaurants, it's, it's, you know, fast food, uh, high end, middle of the road diner, I mean.
All right, then we're going to be middle of the road.
Well, I, I'm just saying, god, give me a break. I'm trying to be creative here.
See, that's the problem.
I should just shut my mouth and smile at the camera.
Go with the flow, okay?
Ah, okay, I'm going to shut up.
Did I, did I hear you want to put section eight housing over in the park?
Is that your idea?
Okay, thanks, guys. Thanks, thanks.
How do you, how often do you frequent parks and recreation facilities in Morrisville?
Well, that's a good one.
I should get a good response on that, yeah.
Yeah, you, 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 you know.
What parks do you frequent? I mean, we can, probably.
Yeah, well, you know, Patrician's too young. You have either Manor Park or.
Williams. If, like, if I was going to answer this, I would say twice a month and where do you go? The canal bike path.
Yeah, the Levy Trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, I'm thinking, yeah, do you walk the levy? Do you use the canal path?
I think we'll have multiple choice for that.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I know, you're going to be so bad.
Yeah.
But then we know, like, what, what they're actually utilizing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, oh, I go down and watch a football, you know, baseball game.
Yeah.
Didn't the Walkworks have a lot of those results in their report?
Yeah.
Probably. I mean, because they've got that really fat report.
By the way, I was on the levy the other day and walking, I did the circuit and I stepped on a spotted lantern fly. On the, on the, I found, this is the first one I found.
That was good.
Did you kill it?
Yeah, yeah, I stomped on it.
Baggage, only one?
Only one. No, it's funny though, because you're walking and it's, it's amazing what your eye like picks up. I wasn't like walking, looking at the ground, but I saw this like colorful thing and I thought it was a piece of, like, glass or something. It was beautiful and then I looked at it and was, oh my God, it's moving. It's just like crawling along on the ground.
Yeah, they do like.
Yeah, that's what they do.
Yeah.
Have you guys seen one?
Yeah, I saw one.
Yeah.
They're heavy now.
Really?
Are they?
Yeah.
Have you guys seen them in Morrisville?
Yeah, a few.
I saw one in Amber at my house.
Oh, my gosh.
I've seen one.
But I talked to someone, they said, well, they're going to be on the trees making those nests and stuff. That's a winter time thing.
Okay.
Won't see those until, until winter.
Anyway, I just thought it was interesting. It was on, it was on the path on the levy.
Just sitting there.
Yep. Anyway.
Do you feel safe in your neighborhood?
A loaded question. I, I, I'd answer a good question.
And I do too. I, I think it's, I think we could get something out of it.
Yeah.
If we gave the right.
What, what, what choice does not save someone?
I don't want to, I don't want to, like, yes or no, that, it's, um.
Unless you put why not, then you.
Like, how, how could you?
Seal off your door at night, that'd be the question.
No, I do not.
No, I do not.
Okay, where do you live? We don't put a, a blank for people to fill in their own responses.
No, you don't want to do that.
You don't do this one like a?
No, I think, I think so, like, how would you, how, how would you rate the safety of your neighborhood? Something like that.
That would be something like, uh.
Yeah, then, then it's not, do you feel safe, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a word? One to ten?
Yeah, but I mean.
Well, that's what we're going to do.
Four and then one to ten for anybody.
You, how would you rate the safety of your neighborhood? Everyone's going to say, oh, my neighborhood's good, but I wouldn't walk into your neighborhood.
Yeah, right.
I, I have a ring doorbell in my house and I get alerts every time someone, you know, sees someone breaking in or, you know, and they, they actually post their videos and, and more, there's more and more in Morrisville.
There is lately, there's been a lot.
There's been a ton, yeah.
A lot.
So.
The breaking.
A lot of car break-ins.
Yes.
I'm, I'm seeing a lot of car break-ins.
And they're also walking in during the day while you're at home. Oh, yeah.
Walking in?
Yes.
Yeah, we had a couple of those.
Yes. Right around where I live.
While you're home?
You live in the ghetto, so.
Walking in your house while you're home.
In the ghetto.
You live up, up there.
Happened to you?
Would asking them if they have a security system in your home, kind of like.
What'd you do?
Feed into that.
Freak out?